All right, thank you. So I will call the Simsbury Planning Commission to order on this Tuesday, January tenth. Welcome, everybody. And for all those who are able, please, if we can rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, so I'm looking, one, two, three, four, five, six. So we have six. Yep, so I am going to, right, so I didn't, did you receive any correspondence from Joe and, I don't...
Ali said she wasn't gonna make it.
Email, sorry. Okay, thank you. So with that said, we will seat our alternates, Marcus and Diane. Perfect, so that gives us a full, full six board. All right. So Bill, do you want to walk us through the minutes?
Sure will. Okay, Commissioners, if you could refer to the meetings from our last meeting, which I guess is Tuesday, November twenty-second, 2022. Anyone have any comments to page one, which I believe corresponds to lines one through forty-seven?
I didn't see anything.
All good. Page two, lines forty-eight through seventy-nine.
I didn't see anything yet.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
I will second that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays?
Let's accept.
All right. The motion passes unanimously.
Another great job by Amanda.
Exactly. All right. So, moving on, the next, do we have any new business, George, before we get, okay, so we'll go right to the P O C D unless there's, oh, go ahead. Did you? Okay.
It's gonna be Glenn's show tonight.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even give an introduction. I don't need to do an introduction. Just remind them that we want to talk about community meeting first.
Yeah.
Yep. So we're in early stages of the P O C D update. As you may recall from our earlier discussion, we've completed the survey. We'll talk about those results later. We're currently tracking for a public meeting at Henry James School on Monday, the thirtieth of January. We have PR materials in the chute, ready to go, press releases, posters, flyers, email. We had quite a bit of success in terms of response and participation in the survey when we did these kind of email blasts and so on. So we're hopeful and optimistic that we'll get the same level of awareness of the meeting and hopefully drive attendance at the meeting. Meetings work best when people show up. And this is a meeting where physical participation or physical attendance is what our goal is. So I think all the prep is in place. We'd like to have the Commission give us, you know, green light, go. And then I think one additional item that we might want to at least throw on the table. No?
Go just deal with it.
We're having a side conversation.
Yeah, so we have some marketing materials, but we also have the potential to do, well, an offer to do some ground, you know, stick with the ground signs. I gotta think about that a little bit because, you know, it's not, who tends to enforce the signs in this town, my office. So I gotta think about whether that's a great idea and what do we have in the budget for it.
So it wasn't something that was included in my budget, and so the whole, that's part of the issue, if you will. But even with email, it tends to be a little bit ephemeral. So unless there's a direct connection, like I can do the survey now, sometimes people see it, recognize it, and then move on. So how do we get it to sort of stick with people and try different tools and techniques over the years? And one of the things that can be effective is for a week or two before the meeting, is signs might go up around town. So I think we're gonna continue to think about this. We don't have any way to gauge attendance. I do recall in 2017, the participation was lighter at the first meeting than we wanted it to be.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons why we might give it a go. But we also may not, because I think of the sensitivity, as George has pointed out, on this particular scenario. So I think in terms of the public meeting, any questions in terms of our prep or what's gonna happen?
Glenn or George, do you know if it'll be in the new auditorium or?
Yeah, we're gonna do it in the cafeteria.
Okay.
The auditorium is fabulous. I think it's perfect for presentations, but I think it's less perfect for me and I having a conversation across the table. Yeah, so we liked, Glenn really liked Henry James. And I actually, a couple weeks ago, did a visit to all our, you know, what are our options? We have big meetings. It really had something, something to do with the Canada stuff, too. It's like, what happens if I do have to host a meeting with 150 people? Where would we do it? But Henry James is perfect. That cafeteria is perfect. It doesn't have, you know, pillars or it doesn't, you know, doesn't have columns. And so it's, you can see everybody. So it's a good venue.
Yeah, that's where we did it last time.
Yeah.
So you had seven hundred plus responses to the survey?
Correct.
Which is great. And do you have the ability, using the application, to advise all those people that there's a public meeting on the thirtieth to respond to it?
One of the things that I have for George is a file. So a number of people to the survey, we asked one of the last questions. If you'd like to be kept up to speed in terms of what's going on, let us know. And I think there's fifty or sixty names on that list. So you'd certainly take advantage of that. The challenge is, in a virtual world, people can sort of watch stuff on YouTube later or do it. You know, they don't have to all be there at the same time. But when we're trying to have a community dialogue about a community, the survey allows people to sort of donate ideas into a cup, but they don't hear necessarily what everybody else has to say, or they don't listen to what other people have to say. And I think, I feel the meetings work best when we can actually have a dialogue among the people who show up, that they listen to each other, they give and take, they're respectful and so on. So.
We'll try, we'll try to do what we did. I mean, the survey was just, I mean, I think.
I was just suggesting that as a means to promote it at no cost, assuming that the people that participated in the survey would be the people that are interested in attending.
Send to them, you know, we use the town's mailing list. We kind of attached ourselves to a couple of, you know, local Facebook pages, which was helpful. We kind of did that, really not formally. I think we'll get the word out. The Chamber has a really nice mailing list. Main Street has a significant list. So we rely, I had asked Morgan, I had asked Sarah, and they were, they were more than happy to help kind of push that out. And I can't imagine they would help again.
What time, that's?
Seven P M.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Seven P M.
Yeah, so it's the same type of format we did before. There's exercises at the beginning.
Okay, good.
Try to engage people, if you will, to think about different, think about their community differently than they typically do, and kind of get them thinking. So that when we get to an open discussion and dialogue, they'll be kind of primed, if you will, having heard what other people have said and being ready to participate. So, yeah.
So that was my question. Can you talk a little bit about that format? I'm not familiar with the exercises that you're talking about.
Oh, happy to. I get so excited about this. Because public meetings are fun. I mean, they really are. So if you were to come into the meeting, you're gonna be greeted and you're gonna be given an envelope. And in the envelope are some exercises overall. The first thing we're gonna ask you to do, there's tables set up in the room, kind of lined up, if you will. The first table, we're gonna ask you to put a blue dot on where you live in Simsbury. So you interact with the map and show us where you live. And from this, we get a chance to see, did we get, you know, everybody's in Wheaton, which means there's an issue and we need to, or are we getting input from all over. But it's also a way to get people used to interacting with the map. The next table they go to, again, it's a map of Simsbury, but we ask people to put green dots on up to four things in Simsbury that they're proud of. And everybody's different, right? Everybody has a different, you would all be different in terms of what you would do. We also ask them to write this on a card, which they will give to us, so we can tabulate and keep track of, sometimes the dots are in the same place, but for entirely different reasons. But it helps people realize the things in the community that, you know, they like and appreciate. The third table is what we call sorries, which is you put red dots on things in Simsbury you're sorry about. And we ask people to write those on a card. So those can be interesting things. I think from the survey results, people wish that Wagner Fort wasn't, right? So probably gonna get a bunch of red dots there. I think, you know, for a long time, the mobile station in Center Town. These types of things, these are things that kind of irritate people. They feel positive about Simsbury. Sometimes there's just little things. And it's interesting to know that. And then the last table we ask people to go to in their envelope is planning points. And the fifty planning points are twenty, two tens, and two fives. There are boxes set up for the topics typically included as part of a plan. We ask people to vote their planning points and what's most important to them. So even though people show up and they're primed for bear, they want to talk about traffic or something else, the question is, do you put all fifty points in that? Or maybe you put your twenty in there and spread the rest around. But for us, the whole idea is, this is sort of the general pulse of the community. We have the results from having done this exercise before. We can see how things have changed over time, what people are concerned about, et cetera. And we then spend the rest of the evening talking about why people put their planning points in the boxes. We talk about the things that got the most points, clearly most important to people. And then we try to use the discussion to convert that to elements and topics for the plan. So even though somebody shows up maybe with one topic on their mind, we're probably gonna get through, I'd say, eight to twelve topics. So they're gonna have a chance to participate on all of them. So it's not a typical meeting where you show up and talk about one thing. It's gonna be wide ranging. It's a lot of fun. I mean, one of the signs that we've often used is most fun you'll ever have at a public meeting. And it's true, because it's a lot of fun. So that's, if we were on Simsbury TV right now, I might not have given all the detail, but it's meant to be participatory info.
That sounds great. I'm wondering how you convey that in the, the marketing materials is general, and I understand that it has to be, because you have limited space. But I'm wondering, in email blasts or on the Facebook pages, if you might want to provide some sense of how interesting the meeting is, instead of it sounding like it's a public meeting, just come and stand up and say what you want to say, because it is a little bit different and.
That is a very great suggestion, because I think.
You directed, yeah.
Right.
Right. No, that's a great point.
Well, and I think historically, we've tended to use newspapers for press releases and things like that. And now we're going virtual on Facebook and everything else. But the signs are useful, because even if you're driving around town, you're gonna see them. And it's not water torture, but it's the type of thing that after you've seen the sign three or four times, you pretty much know there's a meeting in town. So it's up to you whether or not to come. But I think we can take the two message signs. One, one sign says, plan like your kids will live here. Right? And then the other one is, most fun you'll ever have at a public meeting. So if we, working together with George, can time our sequence for this, for media and everything else, we don't have to put the signs up, right? We can, we can try it this way and see what happens. I think that's a great suggestion. And I think, George, you just saved the town a whole bunch of money.
I sent in a text to my zoning compliance officer.
Telling him that it takes two weeks off.
Reminder that we should talk about it tomorrow.
George, I am excited about the opportunity for social media and the signs, that we can distribute these, put them on the town's webpage. They were very, got front page, if you will, on the town website for the survey. So we can go virtual.
Do you need help setting up? Do you want people to come early to help put anything out?
It's not very complicated.
Okay.
I mean, I think everything gets set up in advance of the meeting, in terms of the envelopes, the planning points, the maps. So really, it takes about ten or fifteen minutes to just kind of get everything set up in a line for people to progress. And then we want to set up so that there's a speaker and a scripting pad, et cetera. So it's pretty straightforward, not terribly complicated. So I think we're good.
I think between me and Joe and Warren, we'll help plan out.
So what do you want us to do?
But if you need anything there.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna need my attention.
Just attend. I mean, should we stay on the outskirts of it and listen? Should we sit at a table?
Yeah, I think that it's a great opportunity to listen and read the tea leaves. I think that sometimes people are talking and saying words out loud, but actually you can sign the sense there's other things going on in the background. So I think our collective wisdom would be useful there. So I think participate as a Simsbury resident, if you like, if you want to observe as a member of the Planning Commission, you can do that as well. So it's meant to be kind of an open and fun meeting and discussion. Perfect. Anything else? We're good to go for?
Yeah.
Perfect. So the next thing I'd like to talk about is the results of the community survey, if that's okay with you guys. I put together a PowerPoint. I think you have the PowerPoint slides in front of you. So I will go, feel free to stop me along the way, just as I kind of give an overview of what we heard, what was indicated, et cetera, as part of the survey. And then we can get into detail wherever we might want to. We got seven hundred and forty responses to the survey, I think. A total random survey with four hundred responses gets you a margin of error around your responses, or headed up towards double that. But it wasn't a totally random survey, right? So people had to become aware of the survey, et cetera. But I feel comfortable saying to you that we're probably in the range of a five percent margin of error around the responses. So we're not going here with surgical precision, and we're not going to spend millions of dollars based on the results of the survey. I think we should treat it as qualitative information about what people cared enough about to tell us. And if the results are like fifty-four, forty-six, it's a wash. You really can't say realistically that, you know, more people supported that. So I think whatever words we use, is sort of a, a majority of participants felt that, because it's not necessarily all Simsbury residents, these are people who participate. The first question we asked people was, how did you learn about this online survey? And this has changed over time so much, because it used to be, you know, people read newspapers, et cetera. So what we have here is, somebody told me about it, or I heard about it and read about it online. I think there are some indications that things went a little viral. There were some interest groups in town that circulated amongst their groups. And that's fine, because there are other interest groups who circulated theirs, et cetera. But as you can see, online, somebody told me about it, and social media were the main ways that people heard about the results of the survey, or heard about the survey to participate. What's your main connection to Simsbury? I think it was eighty, ninety percent full-time residents in town, some renters, some of the other options were, you know, live here seasonally, operate a business, work here. But vast majority of people are full-time residents. How long have you lived here? The forty-six percent of the respondents have lived in town for twenty years or more. I think that's an indication that, there was a reason, I guess what I would call sort of a sticky community, in the sense that, and I think the results come out on the survey, that people feel there's an excellent quality of life here. And they like being here and want to stay here. So this is not an uncommon response to this question overall. So we asked people, if you live in Simsbury, how would you best describe where you live? We had this map, which had some general boundaries on it. They, they weren't meant to be precise, but, you know, asking people, which area do you sort of identify with? So West Simsbury, as you can see, is really the biggest area. And I would say it's kind of west of Fire Town, all the way from Granby down to, past the Bushell Fire Station. So that's the one that got the highest percentage in terms of responses, but also strong response from North Simsbury, and also Wheaton and South Simsbury area. So realistically, no major area or section of the town really sort of dominated the overall results. We're sort of still in the twenty-five percent range from some of these neighborhoods. So I think we got good geographic representation in town overall. Whoops. We asked people, and I moved the questions around a little bit from part of the presentation, if you will, but if you live in Simsbury, rate the following factors in your decision to live here, your overall quality of life today. And the top three were the educational system, community appearance and ambiance, and outdoor amenities such as parks and trails. And so those are the things that came top of mind to people, either attracted them to the community. We'll see later on that small percentage of households in the community overall have people, children in the school system today. But still, they are attached to the education system and their thoughts about that. The three thoughts in the middle were community reputation, housing type or value, and town services. And then the ones which were in the last grouping of three, overall vibrancy of the community, its location in terms of close to work or close to family, and then shopping opportunities. So the green is very important to people. The blue is somewhat important. And it was the yellow that sort of not a factor or really no opinion. So we, we did very well on almost all of these attributes, if you will. And what we're doing with splitting hairs a little bit on the difference between very important and somewhat important. But I think these are the things that people recognize and celebrate about Simsbury.
What would be, what's the differentiate, the difference between the general vibrancy and say ambiance?
That's a great question. I mean, I think the issue here is that ambiance and community appearance is sort of a physical perception thing, sort of what you see. And I think vibrancy and community reputation are kind of other aspects of it. Vibrancy might be the perceived activity level in the center of town or things like that. So they're nuances. And if you and I were to sit down and have a conversation about this, then we would say, what is vibrancy? And you might have an entirely different definition than mine. So this is perhaps even a good example of not getting too tied into the specific wording, but these are words or phrases, terms that resonated with people a little bit. And I think that's what gives us a little bit of insight. Just as a quick aside, all the survey results have been downloaded into an Excel spreadsheet. George will be the proud owner of this, if I haven't sent it to you already. Already parsed it apart. But it allows us actually to go in and say, you know, females under the age of, who've lived there for twenty years, how do they feel about this? So we're not gonna be doing that as part of the P O C D, but if somebody wants to, if somebody's skilled with what are called pivot tables in Excel, you can go crazy looking at all the nuances here. So we'll think, we could, we'd identify who we think, who thinks Simsbury is the most vibrant, which, which group overall. How would you rate your overall quality of life in Simsbury? We've got forty-four percent who say excellent, forty-nine percent who say very good. So overall, ninety-three percent of people say very good or excellent. So that's, I think, something to be proud of in Simsbury. You see yourself living in Simsbury in ten years? Eighty percent said yes, twenty percent said no. If you live in Simsbury, which type of housing do you currently live in? Single-family home, less than an acre, was fifty-one percent. Single-family home, more than an acre, was thirty-eight. And then we had multifamily apartments, condominiums for the remainder. What type of housing do you see yourself living in ten years from now? Again, we have single-family, less than one acre, single-family more. But if I flip back and forth between these, you'll see what grew and changed. Whoops, sorry.
Fifty percent.
A little too quick on the clicker there. So it's quite possible, given the changing demographic systems in Simsbury, that people are thinking about possibly downsizing from larger homes. Whoops, sorry. I'll get this eventually.
True, true.
From larger homes to smaller, single-family homes. And then also the possibility of condominiums and townhouses. And I think that this is kind of an indication, if you will, about the changing nature of our community, that people asked are thinking of housing options and choices. I do think that that's an issue which we'll need to address as part of the plan. And you'll notice, too, from some of the open-ended questions, that people have strong opinions about that particular issue. So this is gonna be a delicate topic for us. But I think in the information here, people are saying they're interested in housing choices and options overall. So then we crafted some questions about sort of the different thematic areas of the plan. We asked people that in the conservation section of the 2017 plan, we had a section on natural resources, a section on what we called character, but character is a four-letter word these days in planning and zoning areas. So we called that visual appearance and characteristics, and open space. And we asked people, how would you rank these in terms of how important you feel they are to the future of Simsbury? So natural resources, sort of, you know, thirty-eight percent people ranked at number one, thirty percent visual appearance, twenty-seven percent open space. Open space did very strong in the number two. If it wasn't number one, it was number two for people, et cetera. And I think this is reflective of the way the issues that have been important in Simsbury for many years. They're all related to each other in some way, shape, or form. Natural resources and open space, in some people's view, are the same thing. For some people, visual appearance and open space are the same thing. So I think overall, there's, there's no clear one issue here which is stronger than others. But I think the message I think I get out of this here is that Simsbury has done a good job in these areas, and we could consider staying the course. I have some questions on this, we'll talk about later. In the development section of the plan, there were four different topics that were identified as part of the survey. One was the villages, you know, Simsbury Center, Tarafill, Wheaton, West Simsbury, et cetera, business and economic development overall, concept of sustainability, and then also residential development. The things that were ranked in terms of how important you felt they were to the future Simsbury, again, based on the number one rank, was villages, business and economic development, sustainability, and residential development. And so this is perhaps indicative of one of the challenges we're gonna have as part of the plan. Part of the challenge with dealing with housing issues is that most people who live in a community have housing already, right? And as far as they're concerned, they have it. We're good. Issues, sometimes we're not good. There are people who seek or want housing choices, particularly aging populations, et cetera. And this can be a bit of an issue or challenge for other people, because thinking back to the prior slide, people may perceive this as affecting the character of the community. So it's a delicate issue.
Yeah, and but then, yeah.
I understand. But Simsbury recently worked on the affordable housing plan. So we're gonna be able to take and bring that in, that was done after the 2017 plan, and talk about that as part of our work on the P O C D. The other thing that's come up is, as part of the 2017 plan, it's funny to think it was only five years ago, but sustainability ended up being kind of a subchapter in the development section of the plan. One of the things that's coming through with some of the interviews that I've been doing with people in town is that how much this issue has started to grow, and whether it might make sense for us to think about breaking sustainability out from being a subset of development to kind of its own thematic thing. So store that in the back of your mind, and we'll talk about that as the, as the plan goes on. I asked a question about economic development, because depending on people's support for economic development, and this might involve new development, the question was, which areas of town do you think we should prioritize economic development in? So Simsbury Center was an area where people strongly agreed or agreed. Then Southwest Simsbury, near Simsbury Commons, Hop Meadow Street, from Wheaton to the Ave Online, and Tarafill Center were sort of grouped together in that, in that next grouping. And then in the third grouping was the Hoskins, North Simsbury area, West Simsbury Center, and Wheaton Center. So these are places which we already have business and economic development in our community. But it was interesting to see Simsbury Center, that not much further out in front of the other areas. And that's something for us to think about as part of the plan as well. Yes, a question, in order to meet the housing needs of the future, Simsbury could seek out ways to increase housing opportunities, and some are all of the following areas. We asked people, again, their level of agreement to this. And so Tarafill Center, Simsbury Center, and Southwest Simsbury are the ones that had the most strongly agree and agree responses. And again, we had Hop Meadow Street, Hoskins, North Simsbury, Wheaton Center, and West Simsbury Center sort of lagging behind. But you can see here, in terms of the percentages, the housing question didn't get quite the level of agreement that business and economic development did. So again, I think it's a delicate issue for us to think about as part of the plan. In terms of housing types, do you feel Simsbury has too many, not enough, or about the right amount of the following types of housing? And so on this one, I've kind of reversed the way I wanted to talk about this. And so, on this one, I've kind of reversed the way I wanted to talk about this. So, I'm focusing now on the yellow section of the bar, which is not enough. These are areas that people feel that Simsbury could have or should have more. And so, affordable, age-restricted housing, a third of the participants in the survey felt that perhaps there was not enough of that type of housing. 25% thought more multifamily homes, and then we're down in the teens, et cetera. And if you look at it from the other side, in terms of too many, more than half the participants in the survey thought we had too many apartments. And in fact, in terms of the housing needs of the future for people, that may be an area which we might want to be looking at, and also the same issue with condominiums or townhouses. So, I think Simsbury is in a bit of a transition here. Historically, we were not entirely a single-family community, but quite a strongly single-family community. And the issue of housing choice and diversity is clearly something that there's different perceptions about.
Glenn, wouldn't you say that there's a lot of sensitivity in this question, and you really have to look at the demographics of the participants in the survey?
Yeah, I think you do. And I think, you know, this is an area that as we start to get into the chapter, we might actually break the data down, and really start to look at, you know, who are expressing these thoughts. In the open-ended questions, there were some quite strong opinions expressed on this. In the infrastructure section of the plan, we asked people, again, for these three topics, which were community facilities, utility, infrastructure, and transportation, how important they felt these topics were to the community. Community facilities, 62%. So, that includes really the schools, our recreation facilities, our social, the library, those types of fire, police, I mean, the full gamut. Utility infrastructure, I think comments there related mostly to storm drainage and also internet and wireless capabilities. And then, there were some notations in the open-ended questions about traffic or traffic congestion, but overall, people didn't sort of rank it as being that important, or as important, excuse me, as the other topics in terms of Simsbury. So, now we get into an interesting sequence of questions here. What we asked people was, from an overall perspective, and these are topics typically considered as part of the plan, how important do you feel these should be to Simsbury over the next 10 to 20 years? And so, what we see here is the top three were natural resources, open space, retaining and expanding existing businesses. Next grouping of three, maintaining and enhancing visual appearance, addressing piped infrastructure, addressing wired infrastructure, utilities, internet, cellphones, et cetera. And then sort of drop off a little bit from there, and you can see how the greens sort diminish in the blues as you go down the line. Now, we asked a corollary question to this. So, this one was how important, and this question is, how well do you think the town of Simsbury has been doing at addressing these areas? And these are the nature of the responses. And so, preserving open space, maintaining and enhancing visual appearance, people are giving us good marks for, feel that excellent or good jobs, bicycle-friendly, natural resources, community facilities, pedestrian-friendly, et cetera, and we're generally doing well. Now, what's interesting is when we put these together, right, we asked the same topics, if we graph these in terms of how important they are versus how we're doing at them, we can set up into quadrants. So, what we're able to see here is that when it comes to preserving open space, maintaining, enhancing visual appearance and character, protecting natural resources, it's important to residents, it's on the right side of this line, and we're also doing a good job on these. I think the answer here, in a sense, could be stay the course, right? We'll talk about that in a moment. In this quadrant here, these are areas which aren't quite as important to residents, but we're doing a good job on them. So, things like bicycle friendliness, community facilities, making the town more pedestrian-friendly. In this southeast quadrant, I guess I'll call it, again, these are important to residents, but our performance has not been as high as some of the other questions we asked. Sustainability, resiliency, piped infrastructure, retaining, expanding existing businesses, and addressing wired and wireless infrastructure. And then over here, these are topics which aren't as important to residents, and our performance has not been as strong as in some of the other areas. Addressing housing needs, promoting village centers, and development to grow the tax base. So, as I was trying to indicate before, these are the northeast quadrant, we're doing a good job, and it's important to people. And I think, for our consideration on the plan, the answer might be keep up the good work, right? People appreciate what we're doing because it's important to them. The next quadrant is it, and I think this is the northwest quadrant. Participants feel these are important, but may not feel they're seeing the results. So, these might be areas for improvement. Important, but perhaps there might be opportunities here for improvement. This is, participants may not feel the, these are as important as some others, but they do see the results. And, you know, our bicycle and pedestrian work, in terms of what's happened in town, people recognize it. A number of people take advantage of it and really appreciate it. But this may be an area, again, to sort of stay the course. And again, the areas that survey participants didn't feel that these topics were as important as some of the others, and may not feel that they see results. So, these could be possible future focus areas for us as part of the plan. So, this doesn't dictate the P O C D, but it just puts things into perspective a little bit relative to other topics in the plan. So, and then the demographic questions at the end, we asked people what age group they're a part of. As you can see, that under 20 years old, and certainly younger adults, 20 to 34, and age 18 and over lagged a little bit, but from 35 to 79, we've got good participation across those different age groups. Which gender do you most identify? More female than male? But we also had a group prefer not to answer, so reasonable distribution there, I think. In terms of racial identity, which of the following do you feel best describes you? And we have white Caucasian as being the predominant ethnic racial group, and prefer not to answer, number two. How many children under the age of 18 do you have living at home? And so, what we had here was 50-something percent said none. And then we had one, two, and three. So, George and I looked at this, and we said, well, hang on a sec. This is an area we could really start to look at, and ask, is this representative of Simsbury? And what we found here overall is that there's about, whoops, I'm sorry, about 9,000 households in Simsbury overall, according to the American Community Survey, which is based on a sample of the community. About 6,000 have no kids, so two-thirds of the households in town have no kids. And the other third have kids less than 18 years old. So, in fact, the survey results may overrepresent the households with kids in terms of what we found here, but I still think we're getting a good cross-section of the community overall. So, the additional slides here, if you had questions about exact percentages down to hundreds of a percentage point, or the number of people in different categories, George has that, it's here on the, on the screen or whatever.
Can I include that in your note?
Yeah, no, I think.
You would have been a lot of copies.
Yeah.
So, I can use it, but I haven't had.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've made a note here to send George the email addresses, which I need to get to you, but you have the Excel table of the data, right? Yeah. Okay. In addition, we also had some open-ended questions that we asked people. Did you share those?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I shared the open-ended, right?
Yep.
So, the, yeah, the four, I'll just summarize them really quickly.
Yeah, that'd be great, could you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, they were in the Dropbox, they just weren't printed. You go wherever you need to go, George.
I think Glenn can just summarize them, George. You know, we might get too much into the weeds if we bring up the.
No, I'd like to see them. You can, you can bring them up, though. What?
Q six would be the first one.
I mean, if you can, if it's not, if it's not.
It is not.
Okay, thank you.
It's eight pages long or something.
Yeah, but I just want to, I'm a visual person. It's my question.
They're just words, Erin.
But I'm a visual person.
Me too, my God.
I know. But I get, I, you know, you could go crazy with copies, I mean, it's a lot of work to do, so.
Okay, ninja.
Come on.
There you go.
All right.
So, there are four open-ended questions we asked people, and so, one of them was, if you live in Simsbury, please rate the following factors in your decision to live here. And 77 people answered other and gave us write-ins, okay? So, in some cases, the write-ins were identical to the choices that were in the survey, but they wanted to add some verbiage in. So, in terms of the responses, 22 of them related to character and ambiance, the things that we talked about earlier. 16 of them talked about safety and low crime as being important attributes to them in terms of either attracting them to Simsbury or keeping them here today. 13 of the responses related to services and amenities in the community. They felt, again, a good supply or good condition, it just made people, again, appreciate their community. Six identified sort of community feeling, the, I don't know, spirit or personality of a community, every community's a little bit different, but this resonated with people. Open space got five, cost and value got four, and other issues that really didn't group well together, there was 11 of those. Breweries and dispensaries for somebody, somebody couldn't stay in traffic, and medical care and other situations like that. So, I think this complements the survey results and gives a little bit of extra color to that. I think, next one, George, we, Q 12. There you go, thank you. So, again, the question 12 was, how, how do you feel about whether Simsbury should prioritize economic development in the following areas? We had 28 write-ins here. Seven of them identified North Simsbury as being an opportunity area for the community overall. Three identified Tarafill, one identified the Route 44-167 border with Avon and Canton, so that's historic name for that Crowley's Corner or Simsbury Commons area or whatever. Comments about, look, we've got enough space, fill up what we have, perhaps we're overbuilt here today. And then there were additional comments related to people's concerns about traffic, and more development's going to mean more traffic, et cetera. And then, some other comments, again, that didn't readily fit into some of the other categories, or sort of off-topic related to economic development. And that's why the, they were colored orange or pinkish here, because they were sort of a little bit off, off-topic. I think Q 13 would be next, George. Thank you. So, again, this question I asked about, to meet the housing needs of the future, Simsbury could seek out ways to increase housing opportunities, and some are all of the following areas. People identified Simsbury Center, Tarafill, North Simsbury, and Depends as sort of higher choices. But then the next categories were, we asked them where, but they said no more. There were 22 comments there. Another category in terms of traffic and character, people expressed concern about development, bringing traffic and affecting character, concerns about its possible impact on taxes, impacts on open space, et cetera. So, again, people went purposefully to the other option, if you will, and provided commentary, if you will, to us. And so, the last open-ended was question 23, George.
I don't see what.
Number three. Well, some people were pretty colorful.
Well, was, what they were.
It said, build a, build an affordable housing complex on Cobtail Way.
Yeah.
There's no more land like that.
Oh, we can change the zoning, George, no problem. It's okay.
I'll be on that trip.
Make it a P A D.
I'll be on that trip with Erin. Just kidding. So, question 23 is, people now had been through the survey, answered all the questions, and we said, hey, before you go, thanks for your input, or any other thoughts you'd like to share with us today? So, if people felt that there was something that they had wanted to say, didn't get a chance to, or they wanted to reiterate something, this was their opportunity to do so. This kind of was hard to categorize, but I kind of did my best. I take responsibility for having done this. Out of the 740 surveys, 227 people did provide information, and I think that's, yeah, I think it's, it's an indication, again, that there are things that people care about. So, a bunch of questions, comments, excuse me, 39 of them in the category of character and ambiance.
Glenn characterized them as character.
Right.
It's a basic, decent way to do it.
Yes. And these, again, within these categories, they're going to be positive and negative statements, they just tie to this theme. So, I think as you skim through them, it's more meaningful this way than if they were just randomly split. You get 228 comments, or 227, it's hard to sort of get a sense of what's going on. So, 39 of them were related to character and ambiance, some stopped building, others were, you know, keep Simsbury beautiful. Three related to sustainability. Sorry, George. Yeah, so I had 16 pages here of, of these comments. And then the next category was sort of development-related thoughts, and this is, again, my characterization, but we had 37 of them related to housing. Some people felt that we needed more diversity in housing, and other people said, don't build a single additional housing unit in town. So, this is an area that, again, people have some strong feelings about. There were four comments, actually, it looks like it was five, related to businesses, and then a couple about Simsbury Center and Tarafill overall, just two comments each for those. Next category was infrastructure-related, and services and recreation got the most responses on this. It appears to have been a situation that I would have to say that people requested that others participate in the survey and address the issue. The wording seemed to be very similar between some of the survey responses. It's talking about athletic facilities for kids, all the way, I think, from, you know, Little League and Pop Warner, and all, all the way up, if you will, through the program. People, particularly with kids who might be involved in travel programs, go to other places and say, oh, why can't we have a facility like so-and-so has, et cetera, these types of things. So, there are a number of comments in that area, and other comments too, related to, again, the facilities that help make Simsbury the community that is sticky with people overall. There were some comments related to the senior center, fire department, schools, other services and facilities in town. 14 comments related to bicycle and pedestrian, both in terms of, we're doing a great job, keep it up, you know, why the focus on bike and pedestrian, and, you know, bike riders complaining about cars, and cars complaining about bike riders, so.
This was in the dream.
Sounds like Facebook.
Four comments related to traffic and four related to facilities. Then there were comments at the end that I grouped under other, I wasn't quite sure how to characterize these.
George, is this in the Dropbox?
It is.
Yep.
This was, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that when I went in yesterday, I, I don't know. All right, thank you.
So, other, other comments, again.
Yeah, I just.
Related to situations and circumstances in town, cost of living and taxes were identified by some people. In terms of the plan of conservation and development, telling us, do your best. Telling us, do your best. There you go. Thank you for doing the survey. Thanks for everything that you do for the town of Simsbury, et cetera. And then the question was phrased, do you have any other thoughts you wanted to share with us? And two people wrote in, no, so.
Hey, George, can you scroll up again? No, no, I wanted to, there was something. Yeah, that's okay, I'll go.
There was a cute little icon one.
Oh, I didn't see it was cute. Okay, I read. We're not redacting it, George.
No, there were a couple, I think, that when people, I think, that might have been on boards, mentioned their board, I felt, let's take the essence of the comment and we don't have to. So I think the, it's, it's a delicate act when you're trying to compile open-ended. But I think the most important thing here for, for your perusal and for others is to get a sense of the emotions in the community on different topics and issues. And I think that can help focus and refine our efforts on the P O C D going forward. I also think that this information can be balanced with what we hear at the public meeting in January and set the foundation for us. So at this point in time, that's, that's kind of the update on where we're at today. Public meeting is scheduled, I guess it's, gotta be what? It's like three weeks, right? Three weeks out. And then our next meeting, I think, is in the middle of February. And that's where we're now going to make the transition after I report the results of the public informational meeting. And then boom, we're going to make the transition so that our meetings in March is when we actually get into the chapters themselves in terms of tweaks, et cetera.
What's the public hearing?
Public informational meeting.
Oh, the meeting, I'm sorry. I thought you said a public hearing. Okay, no, I was like.
I may have, and if I did, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
The fun meeting.
The fun meeting.
Most fun you'll ever have.
Most fun. It does sound good.
I'm feeling the pressure, so. Any other thoughts or questions on what we've learned so far? Anything else you think we can or should be doing in this, setting the groundwork for the P O C D update?
I have a few things. And I want to go on record as saying, we, I want to address, we need to meet with zoning. I think it's really important we meet with zoning in some fashion. So I'm just going to put it out there. We can talk offline, but I want it to go on record. You and I went to the zoning meeting, but I, I, if, if we're going to put this in and do our little checks and balances, I don't want to set things up for us to fail if we don't have some kind of buy-in and their input. So I just, I think we need to address that as we move forward. And also, Open Space has, they're doing a dark skies paper. I don't know if we'd want to, I, I think it might, it might be a good idea to talk to Marjorie again. I know we did with.
She provided, her and another member who have provided some written comments.
Good.
I've given to Glenn, I don't know about giving. I think I just gave it to Glenn.
Okay.
Included this, but I didn't think it would make sense to get the view yet. I think that we'll introduce the view and talk about those topics.
That's perfect. But I do know they are working on that. And I missed the last Open Space meeting that times. Anyway, but, but I just. Because I know we talk about dark sky. Yeah, exactly. But if they've done some of the groundwork, I think getting the, you know, it just, if they've done some of this, I just wanted to throw that out.
Was there a third one here?
No, that was it.
So just so that you know, in addition to the survey, I've also been interviewing different department heads and stakeholders in town. And, you know, it's sort of the old story about you talk to one person, they recommend two others. And if I didn't live in town, I guess, you know, traveling back and forth to interview people all the time. But luckily, I mean, I had fire chief this morning, police chief the other, you know, the end of last week. So we got another meeting next week. So I had a chance to talk to a lot of different people. I did talk to the chairman of the zoning commission. You and I did go see the zoning commission. I do think you're right that in terms of the 2007 and the 2017 P O C D, the planning commission has a, has a limited set of functions realistically. But you have the visibility to see the things that, in the bigger picture of the community in addition to other boards. But sometimes in terms of land use to the things we want to accomplish, we have to get the zoning commission to modify the regulations. So I think that I would support the idea of another meeting with zoning to get their input, let them know that we hear them and listen. And eventually, I think, plan recommendations should include some of their thoughts and ideas and the implementation effort. That is one of the things we really wanted to come out of this P O C D with a strong element on, is going to say, do this. And the responsibility is going to be the zoning commission. So to get them to get buy-in, I think, I would support that effort. Terms of the Conservation Commission, I met with Marjorie. We're supposed to go to the meeting on January 2 or 3, I think it was, but because of lack of items on the agenda, they canceled the meeting. So I've got it down on my calendar for February to go see them and to pick up on the information that they have shared with George, et cetera. So to bring that into this process for your benefit as well as, as we're working on those chapters. So I'm trying to get as much information as I can into the different areas so that we'll hit the ground running.
Will you be summarizing your stakeholder meeting? Is that similar to how the survey looked with like top categories?
No, I mean, I think I've got, I've got a whole pad and, and pages on the next one. So one of the things I do with people, in a sense, is I promise anonymity in terms of what's talked about at the meeting. But I take that information and weave it into the plan so that the most important elements come out. George is aware of who I've been talking to. And I'll certainly share that information with you. But in terms of, you know, so-and-so said what.
Oh, I don't think we should have that, but I do think there should be key themes shared with the commission.
Yeah, I think that, that'll, that'll come out as part of, I think, the individual chapters. I think, you know, one of the things we'll be talking about, for example, as part of the community facilities is recreation, it is schools, it is police, it is fire. It's going to be pretty apparent conversations that have been had, the information that has come in. But I, I don't transcribe the notes, if you will. I keep them handwritten and eventually organize them topically so that we can have a fruitful discussion about those things when the time comes. Any other questions or comments?
Not for me.
No, great job.
Thank you so much. And I, well, I look forward to seeing you. What can you do in three weeks? If you show, tell your neighbors, show up at the meeting, if you would, and see you in three weeks and see you in February.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The event, I have two items, just under general business.
Awesome.
It has updates. You'll get a, in the coming days, probably first of next week, you're going to get an email from Joe Polis announcing registration opportunity. Connecticut land use law for the school land use agency board of commissioners. So this is Connecticut Bar. Does it every two years. It's, it's a whole Saturday in March is a land use seminar that boards and commissions are invited to. It's important this year because if you recall, under the state law, zoning commission, planning commission, and the zoning board of appeals members are required on an annual basis to have four hours of training. So we're going to strongly recommend that you attend that. We, of course, will, will pay for it out of, out of the town budget, out of the planning budget. But we, we'll send you an email. They should respond and that way we can get everybody. It's going to be Saturday, March 11. It's always a Saturday, it's always most of the day. It is, it will be virtual.
Oh.
So you won't have to try. It's usually at Wesleyan, they have it at Wesleyan in the past, but it will be virtual this year. So Saturday, March 11, 9 to 4:30. And again, just, just, just look for that. And we'll be following up. If you respond, we, we'll have a, can you guys? Just heads up on that. And then the only other thing I just wanted to mention, just regarding cannabis, from, from your perspective and, and your responsibilities. Board of Selectmen last night directed staff to draft a town ordinance prohibiting retail sales of cannabis for a period of 18 months. We'll go to the zoning commission next week and talk to them about what they plan to do with the current draft ordinance. You know, one of the, one of the likely scenarios is that they will, they'll continue on on the manufacturing side, you know, drag, leaving the language in to dealing with cultivation and manufacturing, those kinds of things. So if there are any changes to that ordinance, I will likely bring it back to you for a second referral, especially if it's just related to manufacturing and cult, and cultivation. I would ask you to, to, to take a second look at it. It's probably the right thing to do. Even if the changes are minor and we don't have to have additional public hearings, I'd like you to take a look at it.
Did they indicate the 18 months to give more time to figure out?
When you say, they, the board of selectmen?
Yes, the board of selectmen. Was it to give more time?
Of course, I shouldn't speak for them, but. No, I think, I, I think it was the consensus of the board of selectmen that a time period prohibition made sense. Slow it down to give citizens the opportunity, if they so choose, to file the petition referendum for, you know, for a townwide vote on it. So I was, I think those are some of the reasons.
Thank you.
And again, anything that the board of selectmen do, their, their ordinance would, would trump or supersede anything that the zoning commission would pass. So I thought that was an appropriate update for you on, on that issue.
No, thank you.
That's all I got.
So how does this affect the six-month? You know, how we, we, we did give a positive referral for zoning. So if the ordinance were agreed upon, does that, do you know, I mean, does that make that kind of timeline bullied in a sense?